Welcome to this afternoon's work session. First item of business is to see if any commissioner would like to discuss any preliminary items for the next BLC meeting.
Yes. I have, um, uh, let's see, on the zoning, where's Chuck? Uh, EGK. Uh, number 28 ordinance regarding the BLC and also number 30. Think we could clear that up before next week so we don't have a prolonged.
Okay, Mr. Reed is, uh, what was your question? I might have some information on it.
What is it that we are agreeing to that we could say?
We have to put the CBD oil, correct me if I'm wrong, within our ordinance because I believe the state passed legislation that we are outdated from.
That, yes. Based upon the new state legislation is calling for the county to adopt an ordinance. Anytime you're looking at whether it's distillery or you're talking about, in this case, the CBD or the Board of Commissioners will have to provide an ordinance in order for us to move forward with individuals to be able to sell that within the county.
Okay.
Because the state passed legislation that allows it.
Okay, so we can have the businesses and all that sell this?
Yes, but it's not currently written within our ordinance.
Okay. All right, and number 30?
And number 30?
Right, BLC initiates zoning ordinance?
If I'm remembering correctly, Commissioner, that's the one that's dealing with, right now, I think the ZAG Board can cap the number of board-initiated zoning changes. Now it's given us the opportunity that the Board didn't have to go by the ZAGs rules and regulations with regard to the number of board-initiated initiatives on. So Legal is putting that on to ensure that the Board of Commissioners is passing that. So we're not capped at the 10. I think right now there's 10 items that can come before the Board at the Board meeting. Now we can exceed that number, especially if it's a board-initiated initiative.
Right, okay, so is that limited to 10 a meeting or 10 overall?
No, right now they're just moving the cap on the 10 for the Board. So if ZAG wanted to do anything above and beyond that, they still have the cap there as at 10. But if any Board member wants to have a board-initiated initiative put on, it's not capped at the 10.
Okay. Thank you.
Gives us a little more latitude, uh, if we got text amendments or something of that nature to be able to have that heard, even in addition to hearing the 10 that the ZAG Board might recommend.
And Commissioner, my disclaimer will be, if I provided you erroneous information, I will make sure Legal comes back and clean it up.
Thank you. It sounds good.
All right, any other items?
Yes, item six. It's, um, the Great Southern Publishers, Inc., located in St. Simons. It's for $21,000. It's a fifth contract amendment.
Yes, ma'am.
Just if you could shed some light on that.
So as we continue to move forward with the Brandon Initiative, Great Southern, who actually was the company of record that brought us forth, the Brandon Initiative, there have been some additional work that we've asked them to do, whether it's looking at expansion of, um, areas within the county, whether it's billboards, whether it's doing work within the airport, whether it's looking at other businesses. They're continuing that work in space. So the funding within the Communications Office budget is just providing context for them to continue to do that. So the funding is there, but because the scope has expanded, we're bringing it back for the Board for approval.
Okay. And this is the same company that came with all the, I remember that presentation, and rest a soul, I remember Commissioner Gregory pointed out there were a lot of mistakes in their presentation, the misspellings. Is this the same company that just changed their name?
No, it's the same company.
Because they used to be 360.
Um, Marketing 360, Southern Publishing, yeah, I think they might have gone through a name change since that point in time, but it's still the same company.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other items, discussion points? All right, well, let's move on to our discussion items. First one up is MARTA Quarterly Jurisdictional Briefing. Ms. Greenwood?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chairman Turner. Commissioners, happy to be here with you to share, if we can get that enlarged, share an update, a quarterly update for Clayton County Q3. I'm Colleen Greenwood, Interim General Manager, CEO. Turn it on. Thank you. So, you know, as usual, we're going to break it into two parts, operations updates and the capital expansion. When it comes to operations updates, I just wanted to start here with this slide, the ridership workforce and financial. From a financial perspective, MARTA continues to, you know, benefit from a really strong sales tax performance. The sales tax revenues remain stronger than originally anticipated, and the fare box revenue came in at, or just a little bit above budget for FY '22 at approximately $60 million. The workforce outreach efforts continue. It's, you know, we've been conducting workforce outreach in all 159 counties in the state of Georgia through 19 different work source agencies. We've gone, you know, online, we've done outreach in Alabama. Net to say that we've gained almost 100 new operators net since January. It's an ongoing effort, but the good news is that has allowed us to make good on our promise of restoring service this fall. So as of, we'll get into the numbers, you know, overleaf on the next page, but I just wanted to just assure you that those efforts are paying off. system, when we started in 2015 with Clayton was at 6%, and the share that Clayton now We had, you know, all kinds of incentives, $3,000 signing bonus, et cetera, et cetera. enjoys is 9%. So those are all are paying off. And subsequently, ridership in Clayton went from 6% overall to 8% of the total system. And also, I want to talk about ridership for a second. You can just see since January, there has been, as predicted, a slow but steady increase Short of, you know, waiting for tech, is everyone seeing what you want to see now? in ridership in all modes. All right. When it comes to, when it comes to Clayton in particular, I just want to point out that,
Yeah, but please proceed on.
Okay, we'll talk about the MARTA Reach Pilot Program. As you recall, we expanded that zone, that Reach Zone, for the last three months. you know, we, yeah, we have 12 local bus routes in Clayton. Bus service share has increased between 2015 and 2019, and the Clayton bus service, the The pilot ends in August 31st, so it started March 1st. We promised six months and it ends August 31st. ridership, has been more resilient and strengthening faster than the system in general. We're going to socialize the wind down of that as of August 17th, so everyone's aware So you can see Clayton in blue, the drop when our essential service system, our essential that this is, this is happening. Our stated objectives at the time was to learn if, how, and why we would employ this service routes came out in April of 2020 was less of a precipitous drop, and you can see service strategy. And so now we're at the point where we're going to partner with Georgia Tech to evaluate that they were able to bounce back and hold it even through the operator shortage service the results and assess the lessons learned. So the first part of the pilot was just this, this small part over on the right in the adjustments, so.
We can't see it on this screen. Is there any way that it can be adjusted?
logistics, and then we expanded it to include all of that area with no additional cost Can we turn that?
It's not on your end, it's on IT's end. It's not connected.
Okay. because we were able to make efficiencies with the available resources. So that happened. Overall, we had favorable results in the system overall, and we are going to be working with Georgia Tech to evaluate those results. We're going to report back to the Board this fall. We're going to do a post-pilot survey at the end of the pilot, and we'll come back to you with detailed results in Q4, in the Q4 briefing. In terms of capital expansion, our bus shelters and amenities update. We continue to deliver as promised on the number of amenities required in Clayton County. So, pardon me one second. Yeah, we promised 30 in each year. 27 have been installed for last year for 22, and three more are under construction on the west side of, you can see the, you might not be able to see it on that, but three more under construction to finish out our commitment for 22. And Clayton County will, of course, receive 30 new amenities in FY '23, most of which are shelters. This is just an example of the photo details that you will have in your booklets, and we're going to have this page for every one of the amenities in Clayton County, so you'll have details on that. This one, for example, talks about, you know, State Route 138 and Taylor Road, serves the 191 route and the Martial Arts Center, the Baptist Church, and the Riverdale Place Shopping Center, just, you know, the before and after in terms of the difference that these amenities can make. The Justice Center Transit Hub update, I'm happy to say that these images are now beyond artist concept, and they represent a structurally accurate glimpse of what we'll be delivering. We are at 30% design, and the NEPA work is complete, and we have been designated as a categorical exclusion, which is good, it allows us to expedite the work. Congressman David Scott has requested a $1 million earmark to support this facility. Now, the annual appropriations bill is not expected to pass until November or after November, but we're watching this closely and get back to you on that. And of course, updates have been provided to City of Jonesboro officials and staff in June. The operations and maintenance facility is moving along nicely. 2026 is the target date, and we're moving on schedule. We're anticipating that on Thursday, our Board of Directors will approve selection of the project design team, the STV team there. You'll recall that this facility includes parking for 250 buses, fueling facilities, diesel and electric charging, bus wash, police precinct, and wellness center. So again, it's that bricks and mortar representation of the fact that we are moving in and we plan to be very good neighbors in Clayton County. This is just an example of the incredibly strong federal support that we've enjoyed here to the tune of $33 million. The most our federal government has invested in a transit project in our region since the Atlanta Streetcar in 2012, which was $47 million. But, you know, Senators Buttigieg and Warnock have been very supportive, and we're looking forward to more supportive comments and funding as we go. The South Lake Riverdale Bus Rapid Transit, you know, our NEPA process is well underway. We continue to advance the special studies needed to support the federal funding request. This is, of course, the first MARTA project to enter into the FTA-CIG grant program since the 90s, and, you know, just another reminder of, you can see the zones there. Mixed traffic is the pink areas, and the gold areas are fully dedicated, so we're, just over half of it is fully dedicated. But those areas that are not, you know, it's, we determined that the lane widths, the speeds, the available throughput is such that, you know, we really don't need to spend the money to turn it into fully dedicated. We're going to enjoy those, we're going to enjoy those metrics without having to spend the funds to get there. So lots to do on South Lake Riverdale, but much progress to report so far. The Indigo Pier City Tour, so I believe Commissioners have received their invitations to that event. The plans are well underway for that September visit to Indianapolis. We're going to focus on three distinctive service corridors and various stages of development and service. Firsthand observation for you to experience and collaborate with the Indianapolis personnel. Hear their lessons learned, hear their success stories, and learn from that. The Clayton County Escrow Balance, Commissioner Hamrick will recall had asked what the balance of the Clayton Escrow is, so I wanted to bring that back to you here. As I said earlier in the presentation, sales tax is outperforming, outpacing the estimates, and that trend continues today, and that trend holds true in Clayton County. So you can see the 14th Amendment estimates, and next you'll see the actual has outperformed in each year. You'll see the operations and sustaining capital portion there at 214.2 and the reserves at 177. So let's take a closer look at that penny. Down the left side, we've split, you know, it's operations and sustaining capital, reminding everyone the sustaining capital is, you know, the fleet life extensions, overhauls, the kind of investments that you need to do to keep your capital investment moving and in good repair. So that's 50%. The other 50% is on the expansion operations and sustaining capital. Same definition of sustaining capital on this side of the penny, and I should note that we have $18.4 million for planning that's already gone on, on the expansion side. So when you take that $18.4 million, add it to the 177.2, you end up with 195.6, which is half, 50% of the 391 collected. And finally, Gooder, I just wanted to point out, you know, we recently opened two new markets this year in DeKalb County, and we felt that it was clear there was a gap in our efforts in Clayton County where facilities are still limited. So I'm happy to share that we recently executed an agreement with Gooder to serve Clayton County with a mobile market and food gifting program. So Gooder is founded by, and founded and managed by Jasmine Crow. It's an Atlanta-based food impact organization which simply gets groceries and meals to local communities in need. So MARTA provided the gap funding required to purchase and retrofit a bus that's going to be used as a mobile market. It'll pop up at least seven times in the next year at specific locations to coincide with the greatest impact and, impact in MARTA's efforts in the community. Senator Warnock's office, again, was very helpful when they learned about this program. They connected us with the Latino community to increase our effectiveness. So, you know, we're thrilled with this new partnership, and we look forward to bringing fresh food to those in need with the help of our friends at Gooder. And open to questions.
All right, anybody have any questions for Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank?
Yes, first, thank you so much for your presentation. I want to start here with Gooder. When you said that there were going to be seven to 10 locations, how are you all going to coordinate those locations within the area to ensure that we're going to the places of the most need?
Yeah, we will, we will coordinate with members of Clayton County. We'll decide, you know, that group, form that group and prioritize the locations.
Okay, when you said the people of Clayton, if you don't mind asking, who consists of that group of Clayton?
So I haven't, I don't know exactly who they are yet, but we will.
I'm going to always say start with the school district. Because we have sections of Clayton County where we do, in the school system, where we do a lot of feeding for those residents, so I think that would be good to start with them as well.
We will, we will approach you as a collective to get feedback in terms of who should be part of that decision making.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then we'll get a calendar of when you're going to do it.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, great. The other thing is I make sure I didn't miss it. One, I want to make sure I get this presentation because I know the handout is, I think, mainly of the bus shelters, but I want to go back to the money secured. According to the letter I got from Congressman Scott, he stated that $1 million was secured through the House for the Justice Hub, and you said that it hasn't completely passed yet, so.
We're waiting for, at the end of November, we will have, you know, official notification of that.
Okay, and then the other, did I hear you mentioned the $1 million for safer routes to transportation as well?
I didn't.
Because I got that on the letter as well. So there was a letter that came out, I think it was last week, from Congressman Scott's office, and it specifically spoke to, and it had MARTA next to it, $1 million for safer routes to transportation. I know we have been working for that. And then $1 million for the Justice Center, so it should be a total of an additional $2 million.
See, yeah, I'm speaking specifically to the Justice Center, but yes, there are safe routes to transit initiatives ongoing, so that doesn't discount those funds at all.
Good, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Like, it was told that you took a group of folks to Salt Lake City to tour that facility out there.
Yes.
And I got a lot of good feedback from our representative who went along with you on that trip, so I appreciate everything that you're doing in that space as well.
Thank you.
They were looking at the, Ms. Harrison, they were looking at the factory that builds the?
CQ 400 train.
The trains.
Who was our representative?
Harrison, Ms. Harrison, Brenda Harrison.
How did we choose who would go?
She was on the, a citizen, it was a citizen thing. Nobody chose.
Yeah.
If you can elaborate, the question is, how was she chosen to go?
I'd have to find out. I'm not sure.
Do you know, Colleen?
Yeah.
Ms. Harrison was a member of MARTA's Rider Advisory Council, so as you recall, there were, you know, we selected a member, four members from Clayton County just served for the full two years, and so there were members from each of the counties from the Riders' Advisory Council who were invited on that trip.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your presentation.
Thanks, everyone.
And I also want to point out, we have Clayton Center also, so he would also help us also earmark some of the places that we would need.
Terrific, yeah. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, ARP reallocation requests. Is that going to be OPM or is it going to be finance?
Thank you, Officer. Did she send you? Okay.
Good evening, Commissioner, Vice Chair and Commissioners. He's going to pull up the spreadsheet for me.
Good evening.
Here we go. Can you make it a little bit bigger? Okay. So last August, when the allocations were done, the Clayton Center was awarded almost $2.4 million. And in February of this year, and when we did an internal audit, it was determined that some of the expenditures did not qualify under the guidelines for the Department of Treasury. And along with that, it was also determined, in conjunction with Dr. Adams, that some of the allocations would not be able to use the full funding based on his experience up to that date. So what we are recommending now, he's come back with a request, can you scoot it up just a little bit the other way? Okay, there we go. We've got the requested amount for 2022 of the $2.1 million, and the way he's got that allocated out, several of those are not, do not qualify under the new ARPA guidelines. So what our recommendation is, is to do the $1.5 million, and with the option for him to come back and provide some additional information on the premium pay, which is $190,000. My predecessor had requested some additional information to back that up on May 18th, which we haven't received yet, so we could add that in at a later time.
What is that amount again, that you said that you can add?
The $190,000.
The amount?
Right, is for the premium pay.
And do we know what information is needed? Because I see the doctor here. What information was it that was needed?
It was the?
Dr. Adams, come on.
Good afternoon, good evening. Afternoon, everyone. Basically, what we were looking at, I think some of the staff that had been identified was the category of the essential staff. Is that the one we're speaking to?
For the premium pay?
Mm-hmm.
Which on the premium pay, that was?
Oh, no, no, okay, I apologize. That's the one where the?
Staffing agency?
The ones from the staffing agency, right. And we actually rectified that we no longer have any staff with the staffing agency because we actually moved everybody over to the state, and we no longer work with them as of, the last group was April. And what we talked about, I think what maybe Deborah needs to get to you guys is that the ones that we know we paid, I think it was December, was the only month that we actually paid them for when they were not eligible. To go back and look at that, but I can submit that documentation to them.
What is the paperwork that we're, finances, is that what they're waiting on?
Yes, I can clarify, get that clear. I'll get with.
So for his payment moving forward or backwards? I just want to know, is it in arrears or forward? That would need questioning on.
Moving forward.
But you're no longer using the services?
No, we no longer use the staffing agency.
There was a conflict because of the use of the staffing agency, and that did not qualify for the funding.
Right.
So what he's saying is he's dropped the staffing agency?
Okay.
So it'd be with existing staff moving forward.
Okay, and so with that being the case, so the $190 would be able to be reallocated because it wouldn't fall under the category of premium pay?
Right, yes, they would not.
Right, well, no, we would be able to be given to him regarding the premium pay, but he just needs to provide the documentation to us.
I have a question. Last time you came, you said that you were moving pay, I think, to $13 an hour?
Yes.
So, you know, I wanted to ask you about moving the pay to $15 an hour. Would you be able to do that for your employees?
I guess if the other funding that we did not get, if that could be reallocated into that, we can move those additional staff up to $15 an hour. I would have to work the numbers just to make sure we don't exceed the category.
The only concern I would have with that would be that this is a temporary funding?
Okay.
And that he would have to be able to find this moving forward.
Sustain it, yeah. And that's, and when you do look at that, I want you to make sure you can sustain as well.
Right.
Because before the $13 an hour, how much were they making?
$8 an hour. And we thought, $8 an hour, $8.22.
And you had a hard time keeping people?
Still have a hard time, yeah. Yeah, yes.
But by moving the payout, that allows you to actually conduct more programs?
More services, yes.
And services, thank you for that, and that will help with the sustainability.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything that we could do for the, I see a couple of items here that are saying that they're not eligible because they're a sub-recipient? I'm sure with all of the talent that we have, is there any way that we can find a way to provide those services to Clayton Center somehow, some way as the grant, the actual recipient? Have we exhausted all means of trying to figure that out?
According to what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, these specific items are not allowable under ARPA. If we wanted to add in an additional thing that did qualify, then we could do that, and then he could reallocate within his own budget.
Let's see if we can get to dig a little further on that, if we can, because especially for the ones about only applicable to the grantees, and the reason I bring this up is we just recently had a meeting on the state level, and we were dealing with another partner with us that wouldn't qualify as a sub-recipient, but as a designated recipient, we would be able to help them. So I'm sure there's something we could figure out on the county side that maybe we've just not explored. And then even on the electronic health record system, if that's really needed, then is there any way that we could use the funding that's available and then the county help maintain that? Is that something you all would be willing to look at as well?
Now, he, you do have the community block grant, the Commissioners Block Grant. That is an option to fund things that are not allowed under ARPA.
Okay.
So that's always a consideration.
Let's look at that a little closer later.
Any other questions? Well, thank you both, and Dr. Adams, thank you for what you're doing in the community.
Yes, one thing real quick, just so that we're not elusive, tell us what the Clayton Center does briefly, tell me about Clayton Center. And too often, community members say, well, we don't do this, we don't do that. So tell us what you do briefly.
Clayton Center actually provides services for substance abuse, mental health, behavioral health, developmental disabilities throughout the county. We also support the jails, we support the schools, the hospitals throughout the county in pretty much every area. Actually, we also do the reentry for the ones that are coming back out. We do the assessment for mental health, and there are no funds for fees, et cetera. We provide, we the only ones, pretty much have the majority of the psychiatric services for the county, so our psychiatrists are in high demand, and right now their prices are the most expensive for our budgets, along with the nurses and the nurse practitioners that sustain.
recipient? Have we exhausted all means of trying to figure that out?
According to what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, these specific items are not allowable under ARPA. If we wanted to add in an additional thing that did qualify, then we could do that and then he could reallocate within his own budget.
Let's see if we can get to dig a little further on that, if we can, because especially for the ones about only applicable to the grantees, and the reason I bring this up is we just have recently had a meeting on the state level and we were dealing with a, another partner with us that wouldn't qualify as a sub recipient, but as a designated recipient, we would be able to help them. So, I'm sure there's something we could figure out on the county side that maybe we've just not explored. And then even on the electronic health record system, if that's really needed, then is there any way that we could use the funding that's available and then the county help maintain that? Is that something you all would be willing to look at as well?
Now, he, you, you do have the community block grant, the Commissioners Block Grant. That is an option to fund things that are not allowed under ARPA.
Okay.
So, that's always a consideration.
Let's look at that a little closer later.
Any other questions? Well, thank you both and Dr. Adams, thank you for what you're doing in the community.
Yes, one, one thing real quick, just so that we're not elusive, tell us what the Clayton Center does briefly, because I'm like Clayton Center. And too often, community members say, well, we don't do this, we don't do that. So, tell us what you do briefly.
Clayton Center actually provides services for substance abuse, mental health, behavioral health, developmental disabilities throughout the county. We also support the jails, we support the schools, the hospitals throughout the county and pretty much every area. Actually, we also do the reentry for the ones that are coming back out. We do the assessment for mental health and there are no funds for fees, et cetera. We provide, we the only ones pretty much have the, the majority of the psychiatric services for the county, so our psychiatrists are in high demand and right now their prices are the most expensive for our budgets, along with the nurses and the nurse practitioners that sustain us. Without them, we cannot provide the services because they're the ones who are licensed to prescribe the medicine that the individuals need, basically those that live in the residential sites as well as those at home. So, we're accountable to the whole state for all of the mental health, substance abuse, behavioral health, developmental services. For the county, we house residents that are mentally disabled. We provide housing for the ones on substance abuse recovery. We do the developmental disability one, they have to have 24-hour care throughout the state and if you know with the whole object we're going through with mental health parity, even with the delegation that is fighting for us and, I believe it's what it's South River, the group, all those that have been advocating for us, we're still coming up short on funding and it's basically similar to my analogy that we've been given a task of making more bricks with less straw, but yet the man is there, I support Chief Roberts, pretty much we call each other. Some of the initiatives is that we've been really trying to get, that we have that response now for 988 that has gone out and we have to have that mental health provider there on hand to go out with the police officers. There's a lot that's going on there. He and I both have struggled with being able to retain staff because of the ability to pay, the wages are lower and people go to other counties that are paying more funds. So, briefly, I'm sorry, go on and on.
You couldn't say that briefly, but yeah, with everything that's going on. Mental health is real. It's real, not only in our community, but throughout the country and worldwide probably. Mr.?
Yes, Chairman and Board. So, in light of the update, we wanted to make sure that you had some context about next steps. So, the idea was to provide the recommendations that didn't seem to be in conflict with the ARPA standards as to what a sub recipient can provide. So, just want to make sure we're getting guidance on next steps. The 1.5 that appears to be within line with the, the federal standards, we were going to put that on the board agenda for next Tuesday for the board to consider that, understanding now the additional marching orders with the other balance of funding that might, can be, I guess, taken care of through some other innovative way that we didn't bring forth to you today. Is it the expectation of the board for us to bring the 1.5 for consideration and then bring back another recommendation as to the, the balance of the funding?
Yes, sir.
Okay, not a problem. Thank you.
Yes. One other thing, Mr. Stanford, if you could come back. I want us to remember that we paid and funded for a counselor for services to be provided directly through the Police Department.
Okay, yes ma'am.
We did that some time ago and then we just heard you say that you all were working together with the 988 calls too. I just think that not to prolong this meeting, but we need to do not just a work session, but a working roundtable work session with all of our LEAs as well as Sonya Davis over in the school system, once again, just to make sure we're shoring up gaps, because even in that piece alone, I kind of feel like if the chief is having issues putting people in that position, you're having people, issues putting people in that position, are we serving ourselves well?
Yes, ma'am.
Or is there a way that we could streamline that level of service a little bit better? So, let's just see if we can do that.
Consider it that.
Around mental health, that would be great.
Okay, no problem.
Anything else? Any other comments, announcements, anything?
I just want to say thank you to all Clayton County employees for the work that they're doing and today I had the opportunity to go to the Boys and Girls Club and all. I am so excited about the presentation that they will be doing in the next actual board meeting. I believe that the Commissioners particularly of Districts Three, I want to say Four and One are going to be excited because we serve, they service all of that area, so just some great things happening. The other thing, Mr. Chairman, we do need to bring back before the board, I did not have a chance to send an email, but we've got to secure our buildings more. I've asked over and over again to put a security plan in place and I was made aware of the specific details of an incident, incident at South Clayton Rec Center. And if there had not been an officer there, then it could have been very dangerous for our person at that front desk. We have to make that a priority. We have to make that a priority for all of our buildings.
Anything else? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you.